All right, thank you everybody. We're back in regular session. At this time, we'll have a bunch of legions. So I see next, the next meeting we have a special presentation from Lakeview.
Yep.
And is that the meeting, Demeris? We're gonna have the Montreal kids in? Or is that later?
I don't remember. Where did Montreal come?
Okay. Maybe I keep hearing that they did, that Montreal's coming for presentation with...
Oh, they are. They are. That's the, that's the presentation.
Yeah. Is that what that means?
That would be, the very, Montreal's Valley.
Right. But that'll be in the second. All right. Uh, Steve, do you have comments tonight?
Yeah. So we have Ryan's story on Wednesday, fifteenth, at seven P M. We do have a good amount, about a hundred and forty people signed up. We did a phone call. I'm sure you all got the phone call, text, email. We've been using social media. We've been putting it out in the Friday folder. And we're gonna do a reminder text on Wednesday, about two and a half hours before the event, just to remind everybody, remember, come, come to the Ryan's story. So we're gonna hopefully pack that place because it's, it's a powerful, it's a powerful program. Little update on to the goals. We have our four district goals. Dr. Cullis, do you wanna, what you do here is, do you wanna update yours? So, we have, the first goal for the year was to work to, toward greater sustainability and green practices in alignment with sustainable jersey for schools. We, we received our bronze award and will continue to work with the green team. And we are going to look for a district-wide, a district-wide certification, not just the schools, but district-wide. And we are also investigating other green possibilities, including the buses that we've been speaking about before. We are also, the second goal was to develop a sustainable plan for facilities that eliminates rentals, temporary structures, substandard, dilute instructional space implemented over a multi-year period. So the first one is, we, the office, where are we with the town office? We have selected the Middlesex Regional Co-op. The board has approved that. The work will be done once the permits are granted, which is coming any day. And we do now feel that the progress of the, of the work will get started in the new year. Substandard states, the board's already approved on ten twenty-three, the development of preliminary plans in E I. Those, those plans are being worked on now. The submissions have been done. And eliminate the need for waivers at leave of use. That's also included in the E I plan. That was approved on ten twenty-three. We are working on fixing the three classrooms that we have to get waivers for laboratories, that all three classrooms will have laboratories. And merit goal updates. Ten percent, first goal is ten percent increase in student independence as measured through walk-throughs. We are, we did take the baseline from September and October. There were sixty-two, sixty-five walk-throughs that noted student independence. Second comparison months will be May and June of two thousand and eighteen. Instead, it's not provided information. Second goal was to recommend a final plan to solve our facility problems. As I just spoke of, that, that, that plan has been recommended and approved by the board. The third merit goal was to increase the district public face with social media. We launched our social media in, earlier this, this year. And right now, as of, as of today, we have about four hundred and twenty followers. We're gonna work on, the next one is creating an award system for acknowledging staffs, community, and student achievement. I'm working right now with the Foundation of Denville on working and doing that in cooperation. The plan as of right now will be to offer three annual awards. One to a staff member. That would be anyone in the Denville staff member, any Denville staff member, certificated, non-certificated, one student, and one community member. The criteria would be something along the lines of community service or going above and beyond in any area that impacts kids' pre-teenage. So there's a lot of different things that could incorporate. Obviously, things in the community that are going on. We, we see all the work that's being done in the community on fixing up our playground. You also see all the other things that we deal with, sustainability and our, and our gardens that we have, things like that. So we're gonna look for somebody above and beyond the, the Foundation of Denville's on board, which is a good thing. And the, the award, the way I feel like we're gonna name the award, the, the down, the Denville or VED slash Foundation of Denville Persons of the Year with the two categories. I've already started discussing the, the sponsorship of each award with some businesses and organizations. What I'd like to have is each business or organization sponsor each award. It would include some type of a monetary award, like a gift card or something. And it would also include a grant or a donation to some charity, something along those lines. We would have, we would, the plan right now would be that we would solicit for nominations through the public, through all the possible media sources that we could use. And then have, put together a committee of people that would decide the winners, announce the winners at a board meeting, maybe have a little reception. That would come up with all that. But we're, we also wanna have a plaque with the three categories on it that have all the different years. The foundation has a response to that plaque, which I thought was a good thing. And also the maintenance of the plaque, which is very minor. The next thing is to apply for some grants. The grant, the, uh, the goal actually says apply for thirty thousand dollars in grants. As of today, I am applying for four grants. One is a grant for, to help support us in our free lunch program that we've been providing to students that are economically disadvantaged. Another one, I also applied for two grants to help us with that home ec room project in Valley View. And I've also applied for a grant that Don wrote up, and I know I sent you an email just so you could, because I was mistaken, I was confusing with a different one. I've applied for the grant through Scott's to help us refurbish the Valley View field. One note is that on several of the applications, did note that the funding, their funds would be dedicated towards hurricane cleanup from this triennial event. So I'm not sure how much of the funds are gonna be released to our area, but it did say on a few of the applications that they were going to dedicate their funds to Puerto Rico, Florida, and, and Texas. So I just wanted everybody to know. But the applications are in. I've also subscribed to Robert Miller Associates, which is a monthly, a monthly bulletin that comes out and explains all the different grants that you're eligible for, that you can apply. So just because I did the Florida, I mean, we're not gonna try to do some more and see if we can get some. And this, this came up with the calendar because, because we're now allowed to start school in August, at least bring back the staff in August. I thought, since it's a dramatic change, we should probably talk a little bit about it now. It did, I didn't have a chance to put it through the committees. I, at this time, don't think I would like to recommend it for November twenty-seventh because M H R D is not going to approve theirs in November. Not that we can't approve ours in advance, but I, I really would prefer not to have to change it if they make changes to theirs. I'd like to be more in hoots. We feel like the, the one I have right there is pretty solid, and that's probably what it's gonna end up being. If you notice, we do not bring the students back in August, but we do bring the staff back, two days on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and the students would start on the fourth. One of the, the main reason for it is trying to move days from June and put them earlier in the calendar because the dates after testing are less valuable in my eyes and also in many other educators' eyes as they are before testing. The driver of the August change is really a high school issue of A P testing. So I don't see a need for the K eight schools to have to start the kids in, in August. And I know the board as a whole, as well as the administration, feels it's important to keep our calendar close to theirs. It doesn't have to be exactly, but close. So if we don't try to adopt a little bit of it, it will be totally different, meaning our kids will go later, their kids will be going earlier, spring breaks would line up, but at least this, this lines up with what, what they're proposing at this particular time.
And they do it primarily for testing?
A P test. So Steve, when are they, when are they talking about? When, when would high school kids start?
They're, they're talking about the, the week, the last, the last week in August.
So like the twenty-seventh?
Right.
So kids would start the week that our teachers would start?
Correct. Now, that also can be a downside because that would mean that the high school kids who sometimes watch elementary school kids would be at school. But if you do it the other way, you're also gonna have people who have made the decision that we're taking that week off or gone on vacation. So I think we have to, again, pull it back to what's good for our kids and make the decision based on what, what do we think is the best thing for kids? In my eyes, starting the kids that week, I don't think is necessary, but starting the staff that week to allow us to align somewhat with the end of the year for them, I think is important.
Now, we have, we have the tentative end date is June twenty-first. That's pretty, that's so...
Right. But that's what the five is.
That's what the five snow day is. So if you, if you didn't have any of the five snow days, you backed the fourteen.
Right. Gotcha.
Well, I for one agree with what you said. We, as a board, we made a conscious effort back twelve years ago to try and align exactly the reason you said. We used to have parents come to us and say, our older students watch our younger kids and, you know, so when the high school's in and your outlet doesn't help us at all. So, and bringing the teachers back in the end of August doesn't affect our parents at all. They could be totally oblivious to it. If we were to actually start bringing kids back, we would need to start talking about it in Maryville because that's traditionally a week where there are no camps available. So parents save their vacation time for that week to do something with their kids. Not only so they do something with their kids, but because there is no other option there. So...
Steve, can we? Well, I'll take a look at the calendar a little more. I mean, I, I'd like us to look at a couple of different options. I, I think that the, the flip side of bringing teachers in before Labor Day is our staff not wanting to come in before Labor Day. And I'd like to see an option of if we didn't do that, what, where could we fit those two days in, kind of a question.
We'd be where we always are, assuming we'd have teacher end service on the fourth and fifth, September, our kids wouldn't come back till the sixth.
And then it's kind of giving out June twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Or you could take one from the secondary.
I know you...
One of the questions is, do we need five snow days still? We haven't used five snow days.
Oh, yeah. You're gonna say that.
Well, there's plenty of other districts that don't have them, and we can give them back.
And we, as a district, I think we went down to, what, four of them are backups five, which we have.
I think we were down to three.
Three, right?
Before the Superstern Standby back-to-back with Irene, those two years, we decided to skip pretty much nine days. We have never been able to fully align with high school because unless they're contract changing, we only have one end service day before the kids come back.
Is Morrison Regional doing a three, a, sorry, one, two, five-day president's day weekend?
You mean, we have a half day on the fourteenth, and then we have Friday and Monday?
High school used to do a week, now they're down to...
Just the Friday and Monday.
Unless you wanna start packing away the Jewish holidays in September, I hope there's not a lot of flexibilities.
Because we have an extra Jewish holiday and the, and president's vacation's one extra day this year.
The calendar lends itself to go longer this year, which is why it's like now.
Yeah.
So what we'll do is we'll put this through the committees, let them talk about it, and have it on the agenda for approval in December. I'd rather approve it in December than January. I think it's time to get it out there.
I think it's important to get it out there, but I agree with your inclination to not wanna vote on it until high school does. Although, I will tell you historically, even when we always vote after them, they've changed their calendars and we have the equal amount of egg on our face that had to change those.
There are plans to go through, Jim, at December.
Okay.
That's ended my comments.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Andy, and your turn.
First point is to thank both schools for review and Lakeview for their wonderful veteran assemblies on Wednesday. I know that some of the board members were able to attend, and I think we can probably speak to the value that those programs continue to bring to the district and to the students of our elementary schools. Anyone wants to comment at this time?
I attended the review ceremonies first, and I took up to Lakeview. And it was just starting, so I, I walked in and the kids did a great job. So I appreciate it, I appreciate veterans and a lot of fun, and it's great tradition. But she is still going strong.
Yeah, I would echo those comments. I was at Lakeview, and I think one of the things that it reminds me of is when we did the strategic planning, there was a lot of comments from the public about ensuring that we are getting well-rounded students. And I think this just adds to the value. I know it is a lot to put together. It's, it takes away from, you know, the traditional academic day, but I think it's well worth the time. And I think it, it totally encompasses the school. I walked around through about seven or eight classrooms. I just popped my head in and the students all asked great questions and are really engaged, and it's a, it's an awesome day. So I, I thank the staff and the teachers and administrators that continue to, to do it and actually expand the fellow schools. So thank you. That was awesome.
I'll add one comment. I was not able to attend this year, but I have attended many years in the past. I am not a veteran, so my thanks go out to our veterans on the board. I'm glad we're able to attend. But just for board members and for people watching, as Mr. Anderson said, he do take away time, but it does give something to the students that they'll never get any other way. And just so we all know, it really does have an impact on the students. I have been, not currently, but previously served on the committee that reads the essays of students trying to get scholarships when they're leaving high school and going on to college. There's a combined P T A one until eighty-one. I ran for a couple of them, and the students talk about that as something that left a lasting impact on them on the Lakeview P T As scholarship committee. And there they are, you know, eight years later or whatever in their careers, and that's where they look back and say, I did some incredible impact on them. So it really is a wonderful program. And I had never managed to either, like, don't get chills down my spine and start crying, even though I knew it was coming, and I've seen them do it before, so. So I was, I'm sure all of them are back, but I've never been lucky enough to attend.
I will do also an update on the goal. One of our goals was to develop additional technology enrichment courses. So we've added, or added two more courses that we're going to be offering. One is called Code Monkey, and we have selected it and purchased it, and now it's depending on which grade level, certainly offered to which enrichment cycle. Just an opportunity for more students to work with coding. It comes from learning.com, which is a vendor that we already purchased from. And the second, I actually got from Brianna, that it's Aerial Innovative Revelation, which is a drone fabrication and piloting program. So they come in and depending on the grade level, some of the grade levels suggest learn how to pilot them, and some of them actually build the drones and learn how to fly them. So I bet the building and the more advanced piloting happens in the middle school level, but it goes from fifth to eighth grade. So some of our younger students will have an opportunity to do that as well. So we've been working with them since I gave you the information at the end of last year, which is trying to get the details worked out. Are they coming during the day, or are they going to be coming after school to run their different projects? So we have a few new things in the works. We've been utilizing the responsive classrooms, which was another goal. So every, all three buildings have scheduled time to either have advisory in the middle school or in elementary daily morning meeting time. And if you remember from last year, when Riverview students came and they demonstrated their greetings, so they started out the year really learning their greetings, and now they've moved up and started rolling in different character education lessons and how students interact with one another. So that's totally in place. We have professional development on the tent with teachers, just getting more ideas of what to do during their morning meeting time. But from everyone that I've talked to, that's really working well. In, in that time, we've also built bus community time. Students are meeting, it's probably more quarterly than monthly, I guess, where they're meeting with everybody on their bus. So the entire middle school, everybody on whatever bus number meets and goes over graduate grad issues and issues that are specific to buses. So it's kind of trying to build that community as well. So their classroom community, their bus community, along with the school community. And one of the topics on our walkthrough form is specifically for warning meeting and advisory so we can monitor how that is going and how students are, how well they're receptive to the change missions. That concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I forgot to update you real quick. This will happen before the next meetings, so our hour code festivities will take place on September fourth to the tenth. That's the thing that we've been doing for the last few years. It's a multinational program, millions, hundreds of millions of people are involved in it, so it's a great program. We're gonna continue, we'll have the publicity and everything out so everybody knows what's going on.
And I'm just sure, did we board members get invited, or were it all parents? Because we got invitations, right? You got it, and I responded. Is that something just to us, or is that...
It was just board members and some other community members were invited to come and code with the kids. And on that same note, the Hour Code organization, it's fabulous, they put out fantastic curriculum, and three of our, our, all three of our technology teachers have applied. If they get accepted, they're going to go to week-long training, full days, training to become certified. So we're excited, hopefully, that they'll get in. We'll hear more about that once we hear.
That's good. Okay. Moving on. Demeris, any comments tonight?
A short one. Just to let you know, we finally received fifty-six hundred dollars for the water testing.
Really? How you sound? Thanks, Lauren. Very good. That's very nice.
Two thousand hours of work with that.
It's not a ton of work.
It's better than nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So that's great.
That was not a ding on you, Demeris, it was just on the government process to get anything out of the state. Thank you for doing it. We appreciate it.
That's, that's great. Okay. All right. Moving along. We'll open up for a public comment at seven fifty-seven P M.
You only take agenda, I don't promise?
Yeah. Actually, only in the form of limericks.
Then I better not comment.
All right. Seeing no one, we will close the public portion also at seven fifty-seven P M. And let's move on to the agenda. Mrs. Lindsey, in honor of the fact you're not gonna be doing this too much longer, would you care to take us through the items we're voting on next time?
Okay. So in section three, all the business collection to be taken at the next meeting, we will be voting on reports from October, the education reports from October, and the H and E cases from October. We'll also be voting on the minutes from both the work and executive sessions and the regular and executive sessions from October ninth to twentieth.
Thank you. Um, any comments or questions on these items for next time? Okay. All right. Let's move on to new business. If there are no objections under personnel, I would like to move items one through four of the block. With item one D, we're gonna read into the record, leave replacement teacher on or before twelve, eight, seventeen, five, sixteen, eighteen. Am I correct, my?
That is correct.
Okay. And we also have under items one, the addendum additions F and G.
I'll second.
Anything here? Anything like this sense? Are you okay? All right. Okay. Someone else, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Simona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Since Mr. Luber's not here tonight, Mrs. Lindsey, would you care if we stood instruction program?
Yes, I would love to. Tonight, I am asking you to vote to approve the submission for the twenty-seventeen eighteen Q S A statement of assurances to be sent to the Jersey Department of Education. Second? Oh, wait, I haven't done that yet. Sorry. Okay. So the one on our main thing is listed as number one. The one on our addendum is also listed as one D.
Okay. Good point.
So as long as that makes sense to everybody, I'd also like to move the workshop for a teacher to go to a teacher's college, adaptive units for special education.
Should we make that certain?
It's, it's, it's working off of the ones that you're not voting on the election. Rather than...
Oh, I see. It's gonna fill in, it's gonna fill in the...
But we're voting on this...
We're voting on D, just D?
Just D.
All right.
So one, is it still one, even though that one's one?
Or do you wanna call it two D, or do we wanna change it to one A? That's actually, that's what we made.
Can I just make it two A?
Can we just make it two? Okay. Make it two.
Okay. So the addendum motion on moving will be number two. And...
It does.
It's just two.
It does just two.
That's good, because I was trying to pronounce your name and that sort of... How many matters must we leave in the class? It's number two.
Okay.
Just number two.
All right.
And now I'll say...
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Simona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to operations. Mr. Cass, take us through the items, please.
Sure. I have an item to move under transportation that the board approved, the joint transportation agreement between Morris Coast Regional District and the Denville Board of Education, the amount of ten thousand dollars for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. This was covered in my main report that we just sent out, so it's gonna be effective with all one through ten thousand dollars, it's coming our way.
Second? Thank you, Assistant Mr. Cass. Anything else? Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Simona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
I mean, I don't know what to say.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So new business for next time. At the next meeting, I or someone else, we should do, like, insert the personnel, one and two. We have some fashion evaluation days. We had F M L A requests and, actually, yes, F M L A request. That's about it. Do you think we have any questions or comments on any of these items? All right. If not, let's move on to instruction program. Ms. Lindsey, I'll ask you to be honest again.
Sure. At the next meeting, hopefully Mr. Luber will be feeling better and we'll be moving
At the next meeting, hopefully Mr. Luber will be feeling better and we'll be moving the workshop and expense list as listed on the agenda and anything else that might come up, along with the field trip requests and for Steve and Cindy to attend Tech Expo 2018 workshop and exposition in Atlantic City in January and to approve for administrative internship for Alyssa Oliver and Mrs. Paisley and for a random high school student to come observe the battle leaders.
I'm just curious, the high school students observing the nurses, what's the course of study?
It's called option two.
Okay.
It's a good, it's a way for kids in high schools to get real-world experience.
Like a practical...
We do a lot with the dollars. They ask us because they have kids assigned already nursing in each one of their schools and random. We don't, for some reason, the nurses don't come to those, so it's probably...
Any other questions or comments on these? All right. If not, we will skip over the policy as there's nothing there and move to finance. Who's the one? Just to chat, anything you want to talk about this?
The next meeting will be voting on the regular monthly check expenses.
Let's sit down here and talk. Somebody will be sure to invite you to our thing for the next meeting.
I don't spend that much on milk, especially a year.
Yeah, what's that type of...
Controversial vote. Beginning of September, we're stocking the charred all the time.
So is that, if that's for like a year's worth of milk?
No.
That's one month. That's one month.
Wow. I had to review it because I had some...
Is it whole?
Sorry. Yes, we don't have strawberry, it's just... All right, B and G, Mr. Cass?
At the next meeting, I'm going to request approval to spend $92,000 to complete phase two, which is the detailed design of all the security improvements at our three schools. And we did discuss this in the committee meeting and it's really important that we stay ahead of the curve on our buildings, ground projects that we do, you know, the big ones. Some years ago, we didn't get things done on time because we, you know, the design process and the bid process was delayed. And, you know, it's all, all the school districts were getting stuff done over the summer when the students aren't there. So it's really important that we get these things, get all the permitting done and all the administrative work done so we can get it started on time and finish it on time.
Any... Anything on that news? Okay. All right, let's move on to the calls. Do you mind giving a quick summary of the...
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Earlier this evening, we had a security committee meeting. In attendance, we had Mr. Capello, Mrs. Wagner, myself from the board, Mr. Porte, Derek Marinelli, Mr. Scala, Mr. Bertani from the district, as well as Officer Soto, or Class Three Officer, Chief Wagner, and Amy Callahan, one of the parents of the district, who's been in. So, meeting, talked about a bunch of different things. Introduced Officer Soto. Again, just so everybody knew who he was on the committee. Talked about how his initial introduction to the district had gone really, really well. He has expressed that staff, parents, and students especially have been very welcoming to him and he's had a great start off to the school year. Himself, Chief Wagner, and Mr. Porte continue to kind of finalize exactly specifics of his role, but he is certainly doing a great job getting oriented with the schools and getting around, like you mentioned, a lot of just great interaction with the students. The students have really taken to having him in the schools on a daily basis and rotating through. We talked about some security items for budget for 2018-19. Obviously, we're in the very early stages of that. The good news is, is that a lot of things that we've attempted to accomplish over the last several years are kind of getting to the, I don't want to say the end of security, but we've taken on a lot of big projects and accomplished them, including Officer Soto, obviously, recently last year. But there are some items and as we get to budget season, we'll talk about a few additional items in the budgeting. Particularly, probably, potentially some more time for Officer Soto, just dollar-wise budgeting, get a little careful on how that's done because he is part-time, that is how he is classified, is a class three officer, so, but Mr. Porte and Chief Wagner worked out the details on that. We talked about at Valley View, we added, if you remember, we added a security personnel person for after-school activities. There's a little bit more after-school activities at Valley View. It's going really well. Mr. Porte and the staff have found a great person who's a recent Rutgers graduate, a Denville alumni from the schools. He's working out really, really well. He, just so you, in case you didn't notice, he does have like a jacket that says security or something to identify him and he's just been working out pretty well there, so that's going well. We talked about security vest fields that were discussed earlier by Mr. Cass. Exactly a little bit of what they're going to look like, although we need to wait for the drawings and the architects to come back, but what that looks like and what that's going to mean. Talked about just coverage of our security cameras and just a little more detail on that. We did talk about the buses and the cameras on the buses, semi-security related. Chief Wagner did tell us that the volume of tickets from those cameras are not going down. I was hopeful that those volumes would go down, those people felt like they were being deterred from it, but unfortunately, they're not. He, Chief Wagner, talked about, again, adding those, they have some of the mobile signs as well as the permanent sign in downtown, reminding parents, not parents, but reminding residents and drivers who not pass school buses. So, and he did say that the process to get that information from the cameras to the police department has improved, just from, it's just a workflow perspective, not improved as far as gotten it, just, they're not getting a dump of 40 of them for the whole month. They're getting them when they come in, which is easier for the police department to process. But overall, he said that that program, lack of a better term, is working well. Like I said, hopefully, we'd like to see a reduction in them, but we haven't seen as many as we'd like, but we continue to push it. Did he... Yeah, if you could interrupt a second. Did he say how many you get per month? He didn't say a number. Off the cuff, I thought he said like 40 for the whole park. He said it was 40 a month. I think he was saying... We can speak to get it.
The marriage is going to ask Tom tomorrow, and we'll report on it Friday.
Yeah, we actually, how many per month and how many they review, you know, watch the show, and answer some of them or discard. They just don't think they can, you know, take it personally. They're going to, they should go, multiple numbers. One thing that I had mentioned to Steve and to the committee was the potential for putting larger signs on the bus saying, if you pass this bus, you're going to get a ticket. There's some, obviously, Department of Transportation has some rulings on what you can and can't do, but Steve's going to look into if we can put something on there. Like I said, the goal of this program is not to give out tickets and to generate revenue or any of that, it's to get people to stop passing the buses. So I personally will dishearten that we continue to see the same volume, but Steve was going to look into it, if we can do it, look and see, we do it on one bus, does that reduce the, pass on that bus? So we'll continue to look at options for ensuring that our students are safe on and off the school bus. Steve talked about December 6th, there's a professional development day. St. Clair's Behavioral Health is going to come in and talk to the staff about behavioral health identification and just seeing if there's ways for us or our staff to identify potential troubling things that they see very early. Steve also did talk about the fact that we've got, we as a district have a great relationship with St. Clair's Behavioral Health, St. Clair's in general, but the Behavioral Health specifically, if there's been any issues, they've been really good with helping us out. I know that from working with them on a community project, that they are very willing to get involved here and they're offering us that in-service at no cost, so. We talked a little bit about continuing to get Officer Soto in front of parents to get parents to meet him more. I think some have, I know I saw him at the Lakeview Halloween parade and I know there's, he's been out and about, but we're looking at a couple of different options to potentially do that. You know, and the police department's been very active with like coffee with the cop, so we may look and try to do something similar to that. I think Officer Soto wasn't the last one, he may be, or the next two coming up. And then, the only other thing that I would mention, I was going to mention this, is going to go to the cause too, also was myself and Dale went to the school board convention just a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that I sat in, I sat in on it last year, now this year, was some of the security meetings and sessions. One of the things that I was really impressed with was the things that they're talking about, that school districts should be looking into for the future, we're doing most of them, or they're very, very near on our list. So I'll tell you, the long-term they were looking at, they mentioned things like memorandum of agreement with the police department and the school districts. Check, we've got that done already. Class three officer, I would say, I spoke to no districts that had a class three officer yet, some of them are toying, not toying, they're beginning, looking at it for budgeting for the following year. And then the final thing I heard was security vest fields, so we're in the process of looking at that right now. So I would say, from a security standpoint, and I mentioned this to Steve and Chief Wagner, you know, everybody I talked to, whether it was the school district or security personnel, oh, the other thing they talked about was actually getting the state police, they offer a service where they'll come in and evaluate your security of your district, what have you already done? So I would say districts haven't done, there were plenty of districts that did none of those four things, and we are three done and then one that is downward of getting accomplished, so you're never secure enough. We are always looking at more options, but I think the beginning of that project, and we talked about a lot, was just the relationship between the police department and the schools, the police department and the students, the police department and the parents, and all of those people in between is tremendous, so we'll continue to foster that. Kudos to Mr. Porte and Chief Wagner for pushing and leading that effort, but that was all. Anything else, Laura or Dana, if you remember?
On the security? No, you talked about the budget, the additional budget items, we kind of covered briefly. Maybe possibly more time for the class of officer, you covered it. You agree?
Yeah.
We talked about, one other thing we talked about was lobby guard and the usage of lobby guard and connecting that, so they're looking into a few things on that. We continue to use that system. That's just what we continue to use as we have security vest fields, that'll be kind of the intermediate when you get into the, between those two sets of doors, so. That was it.
Great, thank you. And Mike mentioned the school board conference. One thing we were able to do down there is Brad Bertani came down, he is our green sustainability coordinator, so they had the dinner and presentation that Tuesday night. That was a very nice event and Brad did a great job and of course, we got the free certifications for each of the schools. We made a picture and article about that, so that's obviously something we should all be really proud about. He and the rest of the staff did a fantastic job getting that and the next step is the district, right? The district's education. That'll be the next goal. So just a tremendous amount of work and it was very cool to see, there were some districts down there, what was the district that happened?
Long Branch.
Long Branch. They had a ridiculous amount of points and they, they kind of, they went through some of the things they did. And I think there's a lot of really innovative stuff going on, a lot of the districts are doing some really cool stuff, both with curriculum and projects and community outreach and the public health, and there's a lot of ways that you can kind of implement these actions.
I think they cheated. Yeah, they, there was, I will tell you though, just to add to that, there were 91 schools, not 91 districts, but 91 schools that received it, so we were three out of the 91 and that's out of 2,518 public schools in New Jersey, 91, so. Great work to Mr. Bertani and the entire team for accomplishing that. It was, it was not a large, it was not a large room and we were a part of it, so pretty exciting.
I am not necessarily going to take time tonight unless anybody reading wants to talk about it. I had sent down the, for the legislative session that I'm going to, the delegate assembly, I'm sorry, next weekend, I had sent down the agenda. Don got back to me with his comments on some of the resolutions. I don't know if anybody wants to discuss them or to prepare to tonight. If you want, you can send me your notes on them. The link has the proposed language on each one, so you can, you know, go over the, take a look at that if you have any strong feelings, let me know. There's one about that we, about the school budgeting process and timing, and the main objection is that when you formulate a budget and then later on the state will cut or change the funding, you have special education, that obviously had a very high impact. So they're talking about a resolution to change the length of that would be done or would be done in different lengths, it didn't have such a big impact. Those are actually, I think, the first two, have to do with budget timing. Then there's one about some of the sunset policies that, that the New Jersey School Boards has. The last one's interesting, it's actually a resolution, I guess it's maybe a committee report, on a resolution that school boards would state that charter schools erode the public education system. The school board is actually recommending not to approve that because they feel that they already have enough language in place, enough policies in place, position on charter schools is already...
That was the one I...
That's the one that you said, kind of...
Final opinion on, because I thought it was, and maybe they have the information, but there was a lot of data missing exactly how, because they're voting the public schools, obviously, you're losing students.
Yeah.
And funding. It's the funding, not the students that's...
So, but this was something, I guess, a resolution Middlesex had proposed, but the resolution subcommittee has actually advocated not to, they felt like, they felt like the school boards already had a pretty well-defined position. So if you guys want to take a look at that and let me know if there's anything, any opinions you have, but...
One that, Steve, is there, is this something that Coalition that we're doing?
Cards and Coalition.
Yeah, is this, do they look at something like this and give you like opinions, because obviously, that's supposed to be a subset of like districts like ours?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for them, but I'm sure they must have just charged schools by now. There's a meeting, just so happens to be the same night as our Ryan story, as at 9:00 for Cards and Coalition, this Wednesday at Grayswood. I don't know if anybody wants to head up there, because I know the other meetings are door to day, it's kind of tough, but I know I'm going to go to the Ryan story. But it's, if anybody's interested, I guess I can shoot them email, ask them what their chance is, but, you know, it's been an ongoing issue for a long time. Districts, suburban districts are being affected by it. I mean, urban districts are really being affected by it. Suburban, some suburban districts are really taking a hit too. We have a really good school district, you know, the parents are staying in the public school system. Rather go into the charter school.
I had just, yeah, a couple of other quick things. Tonight, the Foundation of Denville is meeting, just as a FYI. Obviously, I'm not able to attend, but also if they find out how the meeting went. What they're meeting for tonight is they've, I think I've mentioned before, they're doing a loan grant process as opposed to kind of a lump, the kind of different times. So they have received some grants and they're going to be voting on some of those grants tonight, so I'll let you know how that goes. We mentioned the Veterans Day ceremony, I'm going to mention that again, thank you. And then, one more thing for the school board to mention, I also sat in on... I also sat in on a couple of the finance sessions, and once again, was pleasantly surprised, not surprised, but pleasantly happy to see that we are doing a lot of the things they're talking about, too. When you talk about bus lease purchase things, and just a lot of things that they talked about that seemed like it was ingenious, were things that we do as standard practice, so... So nothing, overall, certainly, we picked up a few things that we've talked to the mayor and Steve about. But I think that my impression was a good one from a perspective of that we are doing a lot of the things that they're discussing at these meetings. So I think we, as a board and as a district, should be happy to hear that. You certainly don't want to get there and find out there's surprise of something we didn't know about that was an option for us, but I think it went pretty well. Overall, it was good, yeah. That was it.
Anybody else, any other good other calls?
Last thing I'll mention, we did the playground showing calendars, the first responders, and the dogs that came up from Puerto Rico, that Meredith took in, helped out some of the, you know, St. Hubert's, too many dogs, so a lot of the local towns took in the animals. So the, if you go to denpleays.com, our website, it has three dates where you can pick up a calendar in person, pay for it, and they're going to have me, some of the gloves there, I've been told. And we're all busy, so you can also purchase it online. I think if you don't remember, it's the Kingsman, if you don't want to start the sales.
I think that's when they start the sound, they'll be here in the community room.
Yeah. They got a lot of newspaper calendars, so...
I made a suggestion of the school board member calendar, but it wasn't, wasn't taken.
Who's carrying that?
They said it wouldn't sell.
We're going to get a lot of them there, yeah.
They're going to blow up the computer.
And we're already, we're already making money off of it.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, teachers get dirtballs, right?
That's what it says, school board member dirt.
All right, anything else? All right, if not, I'll open up for public comment, again, at 8:26 P.M. All right, not seeing anyone, we'll close at, ooh, 8:27 P.M. Moving on, have any for the second agenda, correct? So I'll entertain the motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm sorry.
We have, we have one more thing to write, and that's the Sammy's birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I'm going to see, we're going to be getting on before it starts.
Since it's her birthday, you have a few more things to do.
Happy birthday.
I moved to Jer.
Also, Jenkins? House favor?
Yay, yay.
Any opposed? No, no extensions? All right, we're out at 8:27 P.M. Thank you, everybody.